As the standard pre-meeting hush descends on the room. Murmur, murmur, murmur. All right. Good evening. This is a concurrent meeting of the School Administrative Unit Number Twelve School Board and the Londonderry School District School Board. It is Tuesday, January 3rd. Steve, would you lead the Pledge of Allegiance, please? How did I put the Tic Tac in my mouth? Thank you.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, on our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. Lead off with a few announcements. First, the ones that are -- the one that is printed here on the agenda is notice to anybody and everybody who may be interested. Filing period for candidates for school board comes up on Wednesday, July -- January 25th and runs until Friday, February 3rd. Contact the school district clerk, Lynn McDonald, for information about filing or call over to the district office. They'd be happy to tell you. There are two seats coming up for election this year. Nate, you have something?
Chuck received an email today, and I thought I'd share it with the board and the community. As you know, we're very proud of the energy management program that we've had in place now for 10 years, which has garnered us cost savings of $3.3, $3.4 million. And Tim Nipples, a mechanical engineer with AEC Corp., they're the company that was hired by the state to perform energy use evaluations of school districts in New Hampshire. Tim spent over a week in Londonderry last year, and he recommended us for the Energy Star Awards that we have at all of our schools. The only school we don't have it at is Moose Hill, and the only reason we don't have it there is because Moose Hill doesn't have a cafeteria, so they don't qualify under the guideline. But Tim has requested information on our energy and maintenance budgets, as they would like to make Londonderry the benchmark for low and underperforming schools in the state with regard to energy usage. So basically, they want to use what we've done here and our benchmarks and utilize that statewide as guidance for other schools in the state regarding energy utilization. So I want to congratulate Chuck and Bob Lee's for all their work, and I think that's just another great thing. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Bob. Time for comments, questions, anybody and everybody is welcome to come up to the podium and say or ask anything you'd like. Do we have any takers this evening? Seeing none, I guess we'll -- I'm sorry.
(inaudible).
Time's up.
And I'm probably stealing some of Kaffa's thunder with her announcements, but this Friday is our sixth annual Day of Giving Assembly, and we're proud to say that we have 210 students and staff that are going to be donating at least eight inches of their hair for Pantene Beautiful Lengths, which helps cancer patients with real -- during treatment and recovery with real wigs. And that's another national record, and Governor Lynch will be in attendance this Friday, so I wanted to make note of that.
That reminds me. I also see that a Facebook page for former -- for alumni, I guess, alumni donors or past donors has sprung up to try to support the program.
Correct, and we're receiving a lot of donations. Steve Juster, who heads up this program, has received a lot of donations from alum. We were contacted by a student in St. Louis, Missouri, who was starting up a program at her school. She stumbled on Londonderry's connection to it by going on the Pantene Beautiful Lengths website, and she saw the documentary and was really inspired and is going to do it at her school. So she reached out to me through the contact, and I put her in touch with Steve, and he set her up with his entire program. So it's pretty exciting to see this go across the country.
That's terrific.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. Anybody else on anything? Did you have your hand up on it? Okay, I thought I saw this. And after not noticing Jay, I'm a little bit shy on the uptake here. All right. Seeing nothing, move on. Audit report presentation. Peter?
Yes, we have with us Bob Vashon, who is from Vashon &amp; Cook, a accounting firm.
Hi, good evening. Welcome.
He will be presenting the audit results for June 30, 2011. Before we get started, we have copies of the presentation if you need it, and we have other copies of the actual audit if you need it. I'll get the slides from Mr. Vashon, and it's all yours.
Thank you very much. My name is Bob Vashon. I am the managing partner of Vashon &amp; Cook in Manchester and like to review the town's audit for the year end of June 30, 2011. I know we have new school board members that may not have been through this before, so I thought I'd spend a little time talking about what an auditor does in performing the audit. One of the first things we do is that we assess audit risks. The financial statements may be -- an important word is materially misstated or material fraud that might occur. So we need to plan our audit, that we discover those situations, remembering that you're a $64 million school district. There's a linkage between excess risk -- assessed risk and the nature and timing and extent of the audit procedures performed, and we do obtain an understanding of the district's financial internal controls, and we do update that every year. One of the important things we do in our industry today is fraud risk, so we sit down and talk about potential risks with members of management and the governing bodies, as well as we discuss it internally among our audit team. A new thing in the last three or four years is perform walkthroughs. What it's a walkthrough is take your major cycles. It may be dispersments, receipts, student activities. It can be lots of different things, and we test it from, I call it birth to death. So we look at how the transaction is initiated to how it finally either ends up in your bank statement, either as a receipt or a dispersment. And that gives us -- and we document that whole transaction. We establish materiality thresholds by what's called opinion units, and I believe there are five or so in Londonderry. And then at the start of the audit, we look at analytic procedures at the beginning and end of the audit to say, does anything seem unusual? Do we need some more research besides the testing of transactions? And we look at that pretty carefully. And we'll talk a little bit about some analysis of food service as we end the discussion. The approach changes every year. There's really no cookie-cutter approach. We look at every year what's happened in the prior years and what's happening with our other clients, too. That's really important. The district receives over half a million dollars in federal funds, and as auditors, we're required to expand the scope of the audit, perform certain required compliance procedures to satisfy both the New Hampshire Department of Education and the federal government. Who controls Londonderry School District? Well, a couple organizations. The Government Accounting Standards Board primarily are responsible for setting accounting standards for governments. The Financial Accounting Standards Board sets standards for public and privately held companies. If you had any proprietary funds, which you do not, you might -- some of those might be under the FASB instead of the GASB. The audit standards, they're set currently by the ASCPA Audit Standards Board, but I'll tell you, they're greatly influenced by the private company's oversight body established by Congress. And you say, why are they doing that? Well, that's the group that was formed when Enron and Tyco and all those other companies failed. And the ASCPA listens very carefully to what they're doing on a global basis to see where they're going to go. They set the criteria, how audit should be conducted, and we are greatly influenced by federal oversight agencies. Londonderry receives unqualified opinion, highest level of opinion you can get. If you had your financial statements in front of you, the government-wide financial statements are on pages one and two, the government-type financial statements on page three and four, and the fiduciary statements, which basically now is solely student activity funds, is on page five. And then as auditors, we take limited responsibility for what's called the RSI reports, which is the Management Discussion Analysis, the Budget and Actual Statement, and the GASB 45, OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit Disclosure. If you look at this year's statements, you'll see a big difference in how equity is shown. Effective for 2011 for Londonderry, GASB 54 was adopted by the Standards Board and was adopted to do two things: provide clarity in fund balance reporting and to remove inconsistency in fund balance reporting across the country. The big change for Londonderry is that capital reserve funds are now combined with general fund for external reporting purposes only, because it doesn't fall in any of the other buckets, it falls into general fund. Does that change the way you do things in the district? No, it does not. It just changes the way the audit reports it at the end of the day. Fund balance is now classified in five classifications: non-spendable, required to remain, be intact, restricted, required for specific purposes by others or legislation, amount restricted by the highest governing body, which would be you, would be committed, assigned, as funds committed by a governing body or state law. These funds would include, for Towne &amp; Londonderry, what you have for remaining fund balance, which used to be unreserved, it's now called assigned, because it's required to be reduced next year's taxes. And unassigned, which you would have nothing in the general fund, because of just the way your state law works. And I would refer you to page 20 of your audit report and kind of talk about a little bit what that does for the non-spendable portion under note 11. Inventory, just under almost $19,000 in prepaid insurance -- prepaid expenses, excuse me, $6,400. Designated for next year's operations, $50,000. Capital reserves, that's where it shows up, $305,000. Food service operations, $5,500. Incumbrances, 28 -- almost $29,000, and the amount available to reduce next year's tax rate is $257,000, almost $258,000. The organizations are going to see the biggest change, the towns, cities, and towns in New Hampshire. School districts aren't going to see a big change in there. Right after our opinion is, it's called Management Discussion Analysis, been around for several years. The MDA is prepared by a management team. Our role is to review it in relevance to the audit statements, make sure that only certain topics are discussed, because that's what's required, and the numbers tie out. I think your district management team does a great job at this, because I call it a report card. It's someone who has some financial background, but certainly not government audit-related, can read that and have a little understanding of what's happening. Why did it happen? Because the public companies have done this for years, so I think it's a good document. Pages one and two we talked about are presented on a full accrual basis, which is similar to business. It combines all activities of the district into one column, so it's like you have one private business. The governmental fund financial statements are prepared on a modified accrual basis, which is different from full accrual. It doesn't include debt, doesn't include your capital assets, and it's organized on a general fund of the major fund and non-major fund basis, so it's very different. And there is a reconciliation to the government-wise, and others required RSI's are included in the financial statements, which we talked about as the Budget and Actual Statement. General Fund, that's probably the one as school board members you would use more often. It's based on the budgetary basis in New Hampshire, and it summarizes your budget and actual revenues and expenses. The district's total assets at the year-end were $55 million, which includes the capital assets of $54 million. We have non-current liabilities, debt, and other OPEB costs of $25 billion, and your net assets of $30 million. In a perfect world, and this is not, but in a perfect world, if you were able to get all your assets, all your assets at what's on the books, there'd be $30 million left over at the end of the day.
Just in case somebody wanted to buy five school buildings in Londonderry.
That's correct. That's right, John. The government activities after general fund revenues reported a net decrease in net assets of $107,000. Hold that thought a second. The property tax report is more than $47 million. The state agency grant is $14.6 million, again, reported on a modified accrual basis. General fund expenditures exceed general fund revenues by $206,000. Does that mean that the district overspent its budget? No, it does not. It means that when you set your property tax rate last year, you used, which is last year being 2010, $585,000 of fund balance was used to reduce the tax rate. So you would expect a negative amount in that area. In that budgetary basis, revenues exceeded budgetary estimates by $97,000. That's primarily increased charges for services. Expenditures were $122,000 less than budgeted amounts, and overall, the budgetary fund balance increased by $314,000. The item of note is the food service fund. They experienced a net loss this year, $132,500, as compared to a small loss of $1,000 last year. We looked into it. $19,000 fewer meals were served in 2011, or $53,000 less in revenues. The average cost of the meals increased due to increased food costs and changes in nutritional requirements of almost $29,000. You had some repairs, which you didn't anticipate, a grease trap at Matthew Thornton of $12,000, and you increased your capital outlay, your purchases, capital assets, $22,000 over prior year. Overall, total expenses increased by $72,000 over the prior year. Our experience with other food service programs indicated a trend of fewer meals being served due in part to economic conditions, higher food costs due to transportation, fewer federal commodities, and new dietary requirements. I say that with our other school district clients, and I do have a private vendor that provides, is one of its products, food services to schools, so it's pretty normal what's happening in Londonderry. We did issue a report on internal controls based on the audit, and there were no significant conditions noted during the audit. We had one minor, I assume they have that management letter pointing, on student activity funds that's been addressed.
Not school.
Not school, that's correct. I congratulate everybody for continuing that. There were no federal compliance audit deficiencies were noted, and that's obviously important. As the school board, you are the body we report to, and there's required audit communication, and we can say that we did our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Except for GASB 54, there were no new policies adopted in the current year, and that's an important issue, because they don't want, basically, private entities to change their policies during the year to make their financial statements look better. Any accounting estimates the district had, and basically, they are primarily in depreciation of assets, we satisfied ourselves to. There weren't a lot of significant adjustments, but they were made and booked. We have no disagreements with management, as far as we know, and management did not consult with other CPAs. It's called opinion shopping. No unusual issues with discussed prior to retentions, auditors. No difficulty encountered during the audit that would not normally be present during the audit. And we report again a separate communications provided to document a finding and recommendation in the student activity fund and not school. What's happening in the future? GASB's got lots of plans. The country, America is going to converge in an international place, so we're going to see more convergence to international reporting standards. And that's certainly happening in big time in the private sector. Governments always lag behind, but it'll happen there. There'll be a lot more disclosures, and as government governments fail or default in their outstanding debt, governments will continue to face tougher economic times, become more difficult to borrow money at favorable rates in the long term. We think New Hampshire's fairly strong there, so we're lucky. The cities and towns are very strong in their property tax collection, and we've not had many districts have a lot of financial issues. I think the last one that the state took over was in the '30s, and it was the Town of Unity, so we're pretty lucky here. But you know, when you have the state capital of Pennsylvania, you're in trouble, you know, and lots of towns in Rhode Island, it's a difficult issue. I think we have strong property tax collection laws here, so I think we should be pretty safe. I think the district should be very proud of its manager team. There are no significant adjustments. The management team and governing body can materially rely on what you get on a monthly basis or quarterly basis to make your financial decisions, and we believe that the district's finances overall are well-managed and conservatively managed, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here and kind of open up the questions anyone has.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Steve?
I was just going to, it's not a question, just a comment. All the years I've been doing this, I think this has been the best presentation, the clearest and understanding. I appreciate the effort you put into the PowerPoint. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve?
To that point, so we're a $64 million government entity or corporation here. What do you manage or what do you audit, as far as what's your total dollar figure of the people that you're?
It varies.
Just approximate.
Well, if it's a general fund, it's probably somewhere's around, and I give you the exact number, I don't have it with me. It varies probably 5%, so it would be material. But it varies, because, for example, if cash is off, let's say $10,000, and materiality is, let's say, $200,000, we wouldn't blow off -- $10,000 is a high-risk area, right? So we would look and find out what that is and what's going on there. So it varies by opinion unit. You know, student activities is a high-risk area. We find a lot of issues with student activity funds over the timeframe. So we, our threshold is much smaller, and our tolerance for error is much smaller on that, because it's kind of outside the system, you know, and so, yes. Steve, if you'd like, I'll get that information emailed to you.
I just found it interesting that you were digging into our $14,000 grease trap.
Well, no. The reason we are digging into the grease trap is that the, remember the food service one lost, $132,000, and didn't lose that last year. So we look at there is--
So then you granularized it.
So then we say, okay, what's happening with this operation? Because that's a significant amount of fund balance. So we say, oh, why is repair so high? We replaced the grease trap. That's, okay, that makes sense. We have capital, that makes sense. You know, we serve 19,000 fewer meals. That's the information we want to look, because there's potential risk. I mean, why would you swing from $1,000 to $133,000? So we're looking at why's.
Just one more question, John. The reporting change, where we're now combining the capital reserve funds, the general funds to report that, and you did mention clearly, and I appreciate that, you know, that we need to return our fund balance to the taxpayers at the end of the year, and we've done so repeatedly, and sometimes some very nice funds. But it puts us in a situation, and we've seen with the bond agencies, where they get a little nervous because we don't have a fund balance. The reality, our fund balance is over there, it just happens to be in the town's safe, not in ours.
You're correct.
But it's hard to explain that to people, so does this change help us with that situation?
No, I don't think so, because that showed up in your financial statement, it's just in a different slot before. I don't think that'll help you in the bonding situation, but you're correct. When you, when it, either the town or the district goes to bond, they look at the whole operation, look at the town, the district, and the county, and they build, and what's happening in the community for your bond rating.
Yeah, it's just, it's important to me that we look good to these agencies so that--
Absolutely.
--we can get the best, best dollar figure, so that we're paying the lowest interest rates and all that, and the attention they pay is pretty severe. I served as the president of NHCA, and during the height of that activity, I was receiving monthly calls from bond agencies in New York wanting to know what was going on, what did it mean to the state, what would happen, and they were worried about instability. They were worried about this lawsuit causing us to not have a stable base of funding, and you know, it's, it's just important we always present the accurate but the best picture.
You know, clearly, I mean, New Hampshire starts at the state level. Your bond rating is impacted by the state bond rating and how they're handling revenues. And that works, you know, pretty clearly here versus going out west to California, where they have all the merit of problems they have, and you know, what they've done to communities and what communities have done. I mean, the fact that we haven't had a bankruptcy in New Hampshire, you know, since the '30s is, they know this information, they look at it, that your ability to collect taxes are very strong. They know that information. It's very important to them. That debt, for example, under New Hampshire law, if, for example, the voters decided, we're not going to fund that, right? The state is empowered by law to add it back to the property tax rate, by law. So they know they're going to collect their money. It's, you know, some real strong controls are in New Hampshire, and I think that's indicative of, you know, that we hadn't had terrible problems in borrowing unless, you know, someone is at their limit. You know, there is, the day of unlimited spending or debt may be tougher to get for some of these communities.
But as far as being at our limit, we're one tenth?
Yeah, we're not even close.
One tenth of our--
Right.
--where we could be.
Bond capability.
Right.
Thank you.
Do a good job.
I'd like that slide that said how conservative we were.
You are.
Keep it up.
Further questions from the board? Nancy, are you getting ready to ask something? Usually when people put their glasses on like that. Todd, you guys?
One more thing. Again, appreciate the job, all that's done, but Peter, we kind of put you on the spot a lot of the time, but this is an excellent report on the work that you and your backroom do to maintain the funds in an accurate, accurate and conservative method of, in your investments and the rest of the stuff. Thank you very much for all the work you've done in the past year.
Well, thank you, but it's a team effort. I mean, systems that we have with the board and the community has approved, goes a great deal in providing the tools that we need to stay on top of these things, so it's--
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Vashon. Appreciate your time.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right. Next on the agenda is the LHS 2012-2013 Program of Studies. How was the first day back?
Good, actually. Yeah, kids were great.
All yours.
Thank you. As mentioned, we're here to present and get approval for the 2012-2013 Program of Studies, and I first want to thank my colleagues for doing a lion's share of this work. Diane and Kim worked very closely with the departments, saw a lot of input to any curricular changes, suggestions that their departments had for the courses and the curriculum that we offer.
Excuse me one second, Jay.
I really apologize, but I just think it's just a procedural thing. I think we need to--
Accept it.
--accept that report. We need to take a vote to accept that report formally.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Don't worry about it.
You want to roll, too, but I just don't want to miss it, because then it can't be released to anybody until we do so.
All right. Motion by Steve, second by Ron. That's correct. I thought so. All in favor of accepting the report?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five-nothing. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Sorry about that, Jay. Go ahead.
We believe this program of studies offers students a rich variety of courses that will challenge and engage them as learners, and as you know, and in the budget presentations, we talked about building our master schedule entirely off of student selections, with the number of sections that we run and what courses our students are interested in taking. And our staff works very closely with them during that process. So with that said, the following revisions to-- that process. So with that said, the following revisions to the 2012-2013 Program of Studies entail a revision of course titles and proposed grade requirements in some of our lower-level mathematics courses. You have a supplemental handout, a three-page handout, that I'm going to refer to in this part of the presentation. And the first are these math classes, and I want to focus on the rationale behind this. With our pre-algebra, informal Algebra I, informal Algebra II, informal geometry, and informal trigonometry, there has, over the years, become a negative perception, we believe, by our students and parents initially signing up for these courses. There's a mindset that the courses are not college prep level, when in fact they are. So what we're finding, and what our math department is noticing, is that some of our kids really are misplaced right from the start with the courses, trying to take the higher-level course, and we credit them for that, but it's really because of a course title. In fact, between the informal and the college prep courses, math courses, the topics are exactly the same that are covered. In many cases, the texts are exactly the same. The big difference is pacing of the course. So we wanted to really highlight and focus on that rather than the title itself. As I mentioned, there were departmental discussions, particularly in math, with Diane and Andy to address this very issue, and what was proposed and endorsed was recognizing the informal classes really as college prep 1A and 1B, similar to what we've done with the foreign language classes. So in mathematics, that's our proposal. For Algebra I, it'd be a college prep 1A and a college prep 1B, the difference again being the pacing of that course.
How can you change the pacing and cover the same material?
The same topics are covered, the text, same text is used, but the depth of those topics, they go into greater detail at a faster pace with the 1A courses as opposed to 1B.
And often in mathematics, it's more than one method to solve a problem, and in the college prep level, they'll learn two, three, four methods, and the informal level, they will learn one or two methods.
You mean, there was a second method to do quadratic equations? Nobody ever told me?
Not on all topics, but on many topics.
You look in the back of the book, it says answer.
Yeah.
That's where you go.
Thank you.
So that's our proposal for those informal classes. And with the integrated Math III and IV, there's a heavy concentration of algebra, so we wanted to call it what it was. So for Integrated Math III would become Algebra Concepts, and Integrated Math IV, Fundamentals of College Algebra. If you look at the second page of the handout, we have a sequence grid for mathematics, and it gives you various examples of our students, what they take, and the sequence of math courses. Many of them are taking three and four years of math, obviously, to excel and move on. And I think there's, again, a wide variety of offerings for our kids in meeting them at their level and then taking them to the next level. We have, in addition to that proposal, we have 10 other courses that simply received a course description update, and those courses are listed at the bottom of page two and include a couple of math classes, biotechnology, bioconcepts, college prep physics, college prep, practicing the art of teaching, and a few other areas that just received description updates. And there was only one drop due to low enrollment. The business law studies is being removed from the program of studies. The average enrollment in the past four years has been less than 10 in that area. And when we typically see that, we tend to drop those courses that just aren't enrolled and have a lack of interest from students. There is one new course request, and this is the first time, I think, in several years that we've proposed a new course, and this would be a new collegiate-level economics course in the program of studies. This is page three of your handout, entitled Honors Macroeconomics, and that's the 11th grade honors version of our economics course. If approved, it would be our 16th Project Running Start course, where students can earn college credit in addition to fulfilling the state's economics high school requirement. So I think this is a nice blend with what we offer with our civics component. Our juniors can take a civics course, or they can opt to take AP Government for their civics credit and take that academic challenge. We're trying to do the same in economics. So we would now invite any comments or questions from the board and hope to have your support of our proposed 2012-13 Program of Studies.
Questions, comments?
Jay, how do you pick what course you want to make as an honors course here as a Project Running Start course? Why'd you pick economics and not something else?
There's actually a slew of answers, really. Student interest and requests that we get, but with the curriculum coordinators, with myself, with the teachers that we hear that from, in departmental meetings. Our teachers are identifying a real need in some of these areas. Our work with Project Running Start and the courses that are offered at other schools. Ladies, you can feel free to jump in.
And our students, as Jay said, our students have that option of doing that AP Government, which fulfills their civics requirement. There is no honors equivalent course for the economics requirement, and we have had, over the past number of years, students saying, I enjoy this course so much, I wish it were more challenging. We have students who really want that collegiate-level challenge, similar to what they do in the AP Government course for the civics requirement. They're looking for that same level of rigor in an economics course. Project Running Start gives us the guidance to some degree of what courses are being offered that we could then offer as Project Running Start courses, and Macroeconomics is one of those courses that's available. So this will be geared for those students who are looking for that collegiate level. This will be an economics course, which will have a great math component to it as well, more so than our typical economics course that the more general population student would be taking.
So it's a feedback loop from the students?
Absolutely.
To see what they're asking for, and what they're looking for, as also the elimination of the business law course, which they voted for by not attending the course or signing up for it?
Correct.
If I could just ask, very briefly, for the viewing audience, describe Project Running Start, so people have an understanding. We may not, I've heard about it before.
Project Running Start, we work in partnership with the Community College System of New Hampshire. We work with three particular colleges, Manchester Community College, NHTI in Concord, and then Great Bay Community College. We have 16 courses at Lundary High School that are Project Running Start courses, that the curriculum and the courses mirror that of the college, and in some cases, we use the exact same textbook as we do in the, well, we call it Fundamentals of College Algebra, it's formerly Integrated Math IV. And they need to approve it. We need to submit. The teacher of the course has to have the same credentials as any professor at the college, meaning they have to have a master's degree in X number of credit hours in a certain area before they're approved. Then we work in partnership, the professor and the teacher, and the professors actually come out and evaluate the classrooms. Our students actually fill out forms at the end of the year evaluating the course and their teacher, as they do in college. And our students actually have full access to the college, the library, and the workout centers, everything. They actually get a college ID, and they also receive three college credits, in some case, four college credits for the courses that are on a college transcript that are transferable.
And financially, for $150 to have access to those credits, it's considerable, and many of our students are taking advantage of that in multiple courses. So we're already hearing from our alum freshmen and sophomores. Just so you know, I already have 15 credits entering, you know, my second semester freshman year, thanks to the courses that I took at LHS, and my teachers have well-prepared me for this, and they're excited about it, as we are.
And when students get that college credit, it is on a college transcript. So when they go to bring that transcript to any college that they're attending, nothing says this was taken out of high school. It is a college-level course, and the transcript shows that.
So how many students will be taking this course?
Macroeconomics, we're going to see, our guess is just from preliminarily asking students and getting the thought out there, would you be interested if something like this came about, was about 50 students was our thought. That's what we're thinking potentially, but once we tell the students, yes, we are going to move forward with this, that number could increase, that number could decrease. But that's just preliminarily asking students, if something like this were to go forward, would you be interested?
And who would be teaching the class?
James Choquette, who is one of our veteran teachers, and has been teaching economics for many, many years at the high school.
And as far as texts are concerned and so forth, the funding comes from where?
We've put in a request for a textbook for it, which, actually, because we have to use a book that is approved by the college. So it is a different book than the textbook that our students are using in our general economics class.
I believe it's in the proposed budget.
In the budget.
In the budget.
Yeah.
So question with these types of courses, you take a college-level course, obviously you have to buy the book. Here?
You get the book.
You get the book. Okay, we're paying for the book.
Yes.
Does that seem, I mean, do we recycle the book? Do we reuse the book? How often do these texts change?
They're on a 10-year cycle.
For about 10 years.
Yeah, they're on the 10-year cycle.
We do not change the book as often as the college changes the book. And the college understands that.
Right.
We initially start with the book that they approve. If we change the book, then we have to go through the entire approval process again.
Because I know guys that write books that teach the course, and the book comes out every year.
A lot of the vendors that we work with, though, will offer the online version of the text as well, and they give you access to that within like a five or six-year period. I think you have access to their six-year warranty, if you want to call it that, to stay current with the text that they're offering.
So, John, to answer your question, it's no different than any other course that we offer. We buy textbook, kids use it, they return it.
Yes?
Given the highly specialized credentials that this particular teacher requires for this class, in the unlikely event that this teacher is not able to complete the course for the year, do you have someone lined up that can fill in?
We've got someone. We haven't gone through the process with somebody else, but we do have somebody else that could.
Okay, okay.
We'd obviously just submit one name to the college for approval, but we would have somebody waiting in the wings if we needed to.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any lag time?
Right.
Okay.
Now, those 50 students, can you accommodate all 50?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
What would be the max that you could accommodate?
We initially looked at three sections of 25, so about 75 students is what we would anticipate on the high end.
So you're, what, 80% loaded? No, not even.
Yeah, that would be 25.
What would you be pulling Mr. Choquette away from in order to...
The economics classes that he's took.
Economics that he's already teaching.
Right. So you would just look at the void from economics, because the kids are making the jump to that class.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I guess we need a...
John?
Hi, Kaffa, I'm sorry.
Hi, that's okay. First of all, I just want to address, I personally would have loved to have this in, as part of, to take economics, because I actually thought about going into it, but because I didn't have the exposure probably to it, it was kind of a unsure thing for me. I've heard a lot of positive things about senior class. I actually talked to a few of my friends today about this, and they said, oh, that would have been so great to have, because it is such a lot of fun. Economics is pretty cool, I think. And Mr. Choquette, perfect match for this one. The question I have is that it's labeled as an honors course on here, and I saw that it's eligible, students are eligible to take the advanced placement test. So my question is, would you be teaching to the AP level, like, they'd be ready to take the exam in May, or would you be teaching so that they would be, like, because usually with AP courses, once you hit May, you're like, you're kind of, you're pretty much done after you take the test. Or would it be something that goes on for the whole year?
Would go on for the entire semester. It's a great question. It's being taught to the college course outline. We need to submit to them, this is how the course will be taught. They give us that approval, so we can't say this is a course that we're only going to teach at a challenging level for five out of six months. And once the AP test comes and goes, we're done.
Students would be ready in May for the test as well?
Ideally, they're going to be taking it in their junior year, and they could then take that their senior year, even if they wanted to, and go back and have that extra time to review, if they felt they wanted that extra time.
Or they could take it.
Or they could certainly take it.
And it's still aligned with the AP expectations that your other AP teachers follow to prepare you for the exam. Good question.
Anything else? Give me a minute while I look around the room. All right, I assume we need a motion to accept the program of studies, Andy? Okay. Is there such a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was Ron, second John, I guess. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? That's five-nothing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. On the consent agenda this evening, resignation of Michelle Brown, teacher at South School. Thank you for your contributions over the years, and good luck going forward. Retirement, this is hard to believe. Retirement of Sally Rayer from Matthew Thornton Elementary School. Listen to this. She has been a fourth-grade teacher at Matthew Thornton School since 1981. 30 years teaching fourth grade. In those 30 years in the school, she has been loved and admired by all her students, the parents, and the other members of the staff. Perhaps a little-known fact about her is that she was kind enough to open up her classroom when Carol Mack was doing her student teaching. This is Star Wars reference there. Carol learned a great deal from Sally about child-focused education and the importance of having high expectations, but at the same time making learning fun. She will be greatly missed. We wish her well, and we thank her for 30 wonderful years. That's just astonishing, 30 years in fourth grade. Wow. Thank you very much, Mrs. Rayer, and good luck in your retirement. Let's see. Other items on the consent agenda, we have minutes from, well, we'll loop back to that. Upcoming meetings, January 4th, tomorrow night at 6:30, and the LHS cafeteria is the adult ed graduation. That's always a great evening. Everybody is welcome to attend that. Thursday night, Budget Workshop here, 7:00 p.m. A week from Wednesday, is it? Next Wednesday?
Yes.
Is the Budget Public Hearing in the school board room. That's at 7:00 p.m. January 17th is a regular meeting, and the Bond Public Hearing here, 7:00 p.m. January 31st is the regular meeting here, 7:00 p.m. And we also have minutes to consider from November 29th and December 5th, 6th, 8th, and 13th. I was in another meeting for one of those. Okay. I don't know which one. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is by Ron, second is by John. All in favor of accepting, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention, four-nothing with one abstention. Thanks very much. Moving on, committee reports. Kaffa, good evening again, and would you like to lead off?
Sure. First of all, Happy New Year, everyone. On Friday, December 9th, the National Arts Society held their annual Senior Supper event in the LHS cafeteria. At the event, seniors from around town were served appetizers that are brought in by NHS members, as well as ham, green bean casserole, and a sweet potato dinner. Members of the NHS crew sat down amongst the seniors and had a great time talking to them and listening to many of their stories about their holiday traditions. Before the seniors went home, a few rounds of bingor played, and the winners received prizes. The event was more than successful than it has ever been in the past with more seniors than ever, and NHS was very pleased with how it ran, and can't wait for the event next year. On Saturday, December 10th, the members of the LHS symphonic band played at a John Huntsman rally in the LHS cafeteria. They played some of their concert tunes and also some of the marching songs. When the governor finally arrived, he spent a few minutes conversing with Mr. Susie, and then took some photos with the band. The members of his campaign were very grateful for the time that the students gave up to perform, and it was a nice event and good publicity for the band. On Friday, January 6th, LHS will be holding their annual Day of Giving Assembly, as Mr. Parrin said. At the event is expected that 210 people will be donating at least eight inches of their hair to painting beautiful lengths. They'll be wearing their orange "I Pledge" t-shirts to school on Thursday, and they'll be making the kindest cut of all on Friday. All of the donors are both excited yet nervous for the day to come. On Wednesday, January 11th, the LHS Music Department will be holding their annual winter concert for all the band classes. The event will begin at 7:00 p.m. in the LHS gym. And right now, the LHS Student Council is very busy preparing for their annual semi-formal dance. It will be held on Saturday, January 21st, in the LHS cafeteria at 7:00. Tickets will go on sale next week for a few days, and the theme for this year's dance is Candyland.
Great. Thank you very much. Steve?
Good evening. I too would like to wish everyone Happy New Year on behalf of all of us in the trenches here. This first report comes from Howard Soboloff, goes out to all the athletic supporters in the audience. These are the jokes, folks.
Yeah. We're kind of looking at each other. Do we dare laugh?
LHS girls' basketball won their holiday tournament at Stonemaus. The LHS hockey were runners-up at the Concord Holiday Tournament. The LHS boys' basketball defeated Havel Mass in their holiday tournament down in Lowell. The girls' track team won their track meet at Dartmouth. The boys placed third in their track meet at Dartmouth. LHS girls' swim team is undefeated. LHS boys' swim team has one loss. LHS boys' and girls' ski teams get their seasons underway this week, and LHS wrestling finished 15th of 64 teams at the Lowell Holiday Tournament. From Mary Soars at the middle school, the Political Action Club interviewed the current freshman-class officers to gain better insight into the jobs they perform, the processes in which they were elected, and whether they believe the process should be changed. They had some very interesting things to say, and the PAC will be editing their comments to be shown to the current eighth graders this month. The Political Action Club would like to make the eighth-grade process more authentic and allow more students to get to know the candidates before sponsoring debates and forums. From Carol Mack at Matthew Thornton, the Wellness Committee will be... From Carol Mack at Matthew Thornton, the wellness committee will be holding a recycling fundraiser on Saturday, January 7th from 9:00 to noon at the school. Bring your old cell phones and recycle them for just a dollar. Computers can be recycled for $5. Game systems, printers, routers, and speakers can all be traded in for a small amount. Funds raised will go to support our school wellness activities. The fourth grade classes attended the Courier Art Gallery where they viewed a collection of the museum, as well as a special exhibit of photographs of rock and roll. See, it says, I should have put rock and roll instead of rock and roll. Rock and roll personalities including Elvis, The Beatles, The Rolling Stones, Madonna, and U2. The students are greatly enjoying their big buddies from the high school. More than 100 students have been assigned buddies this year. The high school students are greatly appreciated for the time they spend on this wonderful program. Sue Rowe at the middle school would like to thank everyone for the success of the auction. They raised $7,000, thanks to all the lucky winners. Donna Dyer also from the middle school says that there's a parent seminar, January 18th at 6:30 PM at LMS for all LMS parents. Jack Agati, I think his name is, on how to survive the teenage years will be presenting. And last but not least, Jill Gendren, Spanish teacher at middle school, says that the Spanish eighth students have created athlete interviews using the vocabulary from their last chapter. They will be presenting them to their classes this week in Espanol, of course. The seventh grade students were visited by a young lady today who is teaching English in Mallorca, Spain, I think that's how you say that, for the school year. She talked about the island of Mallorca, the schools there, food, and typical sixth, seventh grade student lives. She also shared letters that her students had written in English. Mrs. Gendren's classes will now write back to them in Spanish and English. Hopefully some pen pals and email pals will be created in this exchange.
Thanks very much. Nancy?
Um, this evening.
John?
Ron? Steve?
I have the, next Monday will be the meeting for the dispatch committee. Nothing else?
Nothing from me either, other than I'd like to thank the music department for the commemorative mugs and the calendars from the marching band, which I presume are available to the members of the community for a reasonable price.
Andy never misses an opportunity to get some cash.
Nor should he. I don't know, Karen and Brooke were watching the Rose Bowl Parade yesterday, going down memory lane of every moment of the trip. It was really something. All right, that is committee reports, moving on to deliberations. Peter, I believe the first one is...
Nope.
No, that's not. That's you, Ron, isn't it?
Steve's going to win.
It's me.
Steve?
The board has come to an agreement with the Allied Health Union. Before I go over the agreement, and we'll be asking for a vote from the board to support that and the taxpayers at the deliberative session, and then again in the voting booth. The Allied Health Unit, the name's just a little bit misleading. These aren't health teachers and they aren't just nurses, although nurses are included in this unit. These would be the people that work in the special education department, speech and language pathologists, assistants to that. We have one assistant that's in this bargaining unit to the 12, 12.8 speech and language pathologists that we have, a physical therapist, a single physical therapist, an occupational therapist that take care of the needs of the students, and the organization, so it's totally, total includes 33.5, 33.5 people, and that includes physicians that are federally funded from the funds that we do get from the federal government. I think some important items to know is, on the average in this group, when you compare what their in-house salaries are to what we would have to do if we were to contract these individuals, in many cases, the contracted cost would be nearly twice what we pay in-house. So it can be rather expensive if we were to go outside and to fill these positions. And frankly, it would be rather lucrative for these individuals to work in that field. So I'd personally like to thank them for taking care of our students every day and being under the employ of the Londonary School District. The negotiations were very comfortable and we went through a number of items. The bargaining unit understood the financial situation that the community's in. They came in with no additional requests and certainly no unreasonable requests. And the increases that we're looking at, the people that are on the steps will continue to move within the scale, just one step each year, and there's no extra. We're not talking about cost of living and steps. There's no hidden fees here, so that's just the step increases. The people that are off the scale, they can't move a step at all, so they are set up to receive 2% in the first year, 2.25% in the second year, and 2.5% in the third. And how many people do we have off the scale?
Half. Half the people off the scale?
I'm sorry. Don't ask a question if you don't know the answer.
I believe it's half.
If you don't know, they have an answer. Thirteen are off scale, so 13 are off scale of those 33.5. The cost to the community in the first year would be $51,930. In the second year would be $56,426. And the third year, $61,500. So in each of those years, the total tax impact would be two cents per person. There were no other requested items. We do have a new wording to the sick bank that relates and matches the teacher sick bank with which they share, and that the board's going to allocate 20 sick days per year. That is 20 sick days per year total for everybody in both unions, not per person or per unit or anything. So then, any union member cannot use more than five of those days during the course of one year. Sidebar agreement. I don't know, sidebar agreement?
Basically, is with all the people that are off scale, we're going to look at these scales and see how we can make them back on scale for these groups here with the 13 people off scale. So that's going to be just a meeting, and whatever is decided in that sidebar agreement will be presented at the next contract.
There was some other sidebar agreement requests that we've both decided mutually not to entertain. So that's it. It's a, you know, reasonable increase considering the situation, particularly for this bargaining unit and these positions which are very valuable to other districts and to the private industry that's out there.
Questions?
The only comment I have on here is just to be aware that these positions are listed as critical shortage areas. So it's recognized by the state that these positions are critical shortage areas and very difficult to fill.
Meaning that there are not enough people available with the qualifications to do the job throughout the state?
That is correct.
Okay. Nate, can you touch briefly, Kim, if you want to participate in this too? This is another one of those areas where we hear questions, and although I could answer some of them myself, I wonder if you could provide a fuller picture of what these people do on a day-to-day basis?
Sure. I'll start off and then Kim can correct all my mistakes and fill in in between. But your speech and language pathologist, not only, people normally think of just articulation, but actually they work with kids on language skills. It's a significant impact. Occupational therapy and the OTs and the PTs, we have a number of youngsters who have difficulty with a variety of fine motor skills and need rehabilitation, some because of born physical defects, others for the others. Everything from working on how to tie your shoe, working on tying your shoe, to grasping utensils, to being able to manipulate a pen or a pencil. They're all involved with that. So in physical therapy, we have a number of youngsters in the district who have significant physical disabilities, and it's exactly that. They work with, the physical therapists work with the students and also with the case managers and the teachers to work with kids on everything from range of motion to building up strength in limbs or in their body, so that in fact they can benefit from an educational program. So it covers the whole gamut of programs. The intent behind all of these, for OT and PT really, is to put students in a position where they can benefit from educational experience. You know, just think of, if you do not have the ability to hold a pencil correctly, how are you going to write? How are you going to benefit? And even down to being able to work on a keyboard or work on a tablet. So they work with the kids on all those activities. Speech and language, as we said before, everything from articulation to absolute language skills. We have some students who, by the nature of their disability, cannot connect the, have difficulty connecting the thought to a sound, and our speech and language people work with them and also work with a concept of language so that in fact they can communicate. So, and that goes up and down the line, pre-K through 12. Kim?
First of all, the superintendent said everything correctly. But I would add to what Nate said, that at the middle and high school levels, our occupational therapists work a lot on pre-vocational skills with our students. At the middle school, for example, along with the teacher in the BAS program, they run the coffee cart, where the children learn how to go out and buy all of the supplies needed and then run a coffee cart on Fridays for the school. At the high school, they work on all types of community trips. That's one of the reasons why we, through the ARAM money, bought the small bus so that the kids could go out into the community. Our occupational and our speech and language pathologist go out and do those with the teachers. They are all essential members of the elementary school, working with RTI, response to intervention, working with children prior to becoming identified, and hopefully instead of becoming identified as children with disabilities. And they also work on self-regulation. All of our self-contained programs have, if not direct service, at least consult by the speech and language department and the occupational therapy department to work with children on self-regulation, calming themselves, or bringing themselves up to a level where they can attend in the classroom.
Any additional questions, comments? Ron?
Kim, all these positions and the hours that are associated with this are identified in IEPs, correct?
They are all, except for the RTI hours, they are all tied to legally binding agreements with families.
Which is federal law.
Correct. Yep, all of the, they're called related services, and counseling fits into that as well, but they are required that a school district provide them to children who need them as part of their individual plans.
So if we did not have these people here, we would have to contract the services out? It's not a way to get around this?
We would absolutely have to contract out. We have had to do that on occasion where we've had a long-term maternity leave and haven't been able to fill it. Or we also have to provide these services during the summertime in our extended school year programs, and at times those can be difficult to fill, and Steve's absolutely correct. The per diem or the per hourly rate when we contract out is significant.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering the question. I just appreciate you answering the question. Thanks very much. Yes?
I just want to make sure the rent's fixed, fuck, then it's two cents per thousand evaluation. Did I say the taxes are going up two cents? No, you said two cents per person. And if it wasn't recorded minutes, I wouldn't have said a word. I appreciate that.
Thanks very much. Additional comments, questions? All right, is there a motion from the board in regards to the proposed agreement with the Allied Health employees?
Sir Chairman, I make the motion we accept the agreement with the Allied Health Union to present to the voters in March of this year.
Second.
Motion is by Ron, second is by Steve. Are there any additional questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That's five, nothing.
Now, Peter, you remember when we had a dollar head tax, don't you? Yes, I do. That was fun. Absolutely. Yeah, I'm just not going there. Every, oh, for those that don't know, from back then, I'm really, in London, they used to have to pay a dollar per head in the house. So every adult head had to pay a dollar, and it went away in the early 80s? 88. Okay, late 80s, okay. But yeah, you had to pay a dollar if you lived in town, if you were an adult in a home per head. It was, for whatever reason.
Was that the whole tax?
That was the whole tax, just a dollar a year. Every year, you had to pay, go in and pay it separate. Thanks.
Okay, moving right along. Odd segue here. Peter, I guess the next one is here, is transportation vendor recommendation?
Well, doing two pieces, we'll go through the process, I'll ask the board for a recommendation of the vendor, and then assuming we get approval, then we'll talk about some of the options that we're going to, I repeat, that the board should deliberate on. As the board is aware, the current transportation with Goss Town Truck Center expires this June. The business office developed, and I repeat, seeking vendor proposals for the district's general ed and transportation needs. An ad was placed in the union leader and in the Eagle Tribune in mid-October, and the exact dates were in my memo. We put a copy of the ad on our website, we put a copy of the ad on the LGC classified website, and that's an area that a lot of towns and schools will post ads for either selling equipment or RPs and so forth. The ad obviously alerted vendors that we are seeking proposals for transportation needs and also directed the vendors that a full copy of the RP could be located on our website, as well as they could obviously call the business office and receive a copy electronically or in paper. The closing for the proposals was Friday, November 18th, so the, each of the vendors had about a month to put together their proposal. During that month, we received many phone calls, inquiries, from about six or seven different vendors. I will say, many of the calls were specifically on the kindergarten program. Being that it's a standalone program, some of them had a difficulty with the concept of six, 12, six, and is integrated with the elementary schools, and a little, once that got cleared up, it seemed to be pretty much straightforward questions on clarifying, and that was it. We received, on it before the due date, four proposals. We had an opening in the school boardroom, actually five vendors or five reps from vendors showed. One was there just to see who was bidding and what the numbers were. And four actually submitted proposals, which are listed in the table in the memo. After reading each of the four proposals we got, I contacted the second and third lowest pricing, price vendor, wanted to make sure that they understood the proposal, if they had any questions on us, if they had any comments on the results of the pricing, if they were, if they thought it was fair process, did they miss something, did they miss, let's say, the kindergarten program, for example? And both said no, they understood what, you know, the process, they thought it was fair, they thought it was clear. They were surprised at the one low bid, with the price of the low bid. If you remember in the PAC, if there were three, they were pretty close, and the recommended vendor was far lower than the other three. As I said in my memo, I was concerned only in that, when you have three vendors that are so close and one as low as it was, my concern was, and I expressed this in a sit-down interview with representatives from Goss Town Truck Center, that was this contract sustainable? And what I mean by that was, I'm happy that the price is what it is, obviously, but I didn't want to get the district into a position where, let's say, year two or year three, it becomes unsustainable from their end and they're cutting them back in maintenance. it becomes unsustainable from their end, and they're cutting them back in maintenance. And if you remember the issue we had with the drivers one year. And, and I just, that was my only concern with them, that this was, in their minds, they calculated correctly and they're comfortable with their pricing. And in fact, I contacted two local districts who have just gone through a bid process, one last year and one that was just announced in the paper. And our pricing is right in there with them. Actually, it's a bit lower than both of them, but, but nothing significant to what you see in the table. So that made me comfortable, that the number that we were getting from Goffstown was, was sustainable in that it was a good price. And moving forward in five years, we should receive the same quality of services that we've gotten from them from the past. So with that, I would ask the board to allow the staff of the district to begin negotiations with Goffstown Truck Center for a contract which would be the same as what we had in the past. It'd be a five-year contract with a two-year option year. With the amounts stated in my table.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I guess we'll go the motion route. Is there a motion regarding that recommendation?
What, what do you negotiate?
Well, this is the pricing, so they won't change. But then in the contract, you'll get into, they may, they may ask for, I'm just making it up now. They may want a notice of four months that we're going to terminate a bus. And I'll argue for two months. So it's that kind of language stuff, not the actual pricing.
What about going back in history? We had issues with the athletic buses. Or we sat on the number of athletic buses that we had on that because we ran into a problem?
We had, the contract we had now was five. This is four. But remember, we've had, we now have three minibus. So we haven't had, I, I can honestly say, I don't remember an issue for the past two years, since the minibus, with, with transportation of the athletics program, that I can remember.
Let me ask a question a little differently. I understand that, but we have five buses plus three minibus to make it work. And I assume we're using all five?
On, on some cases, in some cases. But you can make it, you can ask me to make it five, and that would be part of the contract that I'll, I'll enter with, with Goffstown. And if the pricing changes, I come back. But I don't think the price would change.
I would like to maintain, this is just me speaking, maintain the same number of buses that we have now, plus the minibus. It seems to be working, and we haven't had the problems that we had in the past.
It's fine, I can, I don't think it will change anything. If it does, I will honestly come back, but I don't think it will change anything.
Is there any other changes from the contract we have today in, in services that we had previously?
No.
I'm okay.
So Ron saying that means they're still required to have a terminal in town?
That's, that's all there. The main, the terminal is, well, actually, in this case, the terminal is still up at Mammoth Road. And that was one of the questions I'd asked the people, was, you know, with the terminal, was there an issue with the terminal? So, so all that came into play, I think, in their pricing versus what Goffstown was be, was able to give us.
And the equipment's all the, because they do, they have, have been good on their equipment quality and...
Yes.
I mean, it could be the price is where it is because they know us and they know our administration and...
Well, I think it was that too. And as I mentioned, when I contacted the other school district in the area, their prices were in line with what we're getting, not fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three of us.
Right.
So that made me feel more comfortable that, that we're getting a, when I say a good price, I mean for both sides of the...
Well, the other vendors had to deal with the unknown.
Yes.
Thank you.
What is the bus replacement on this? And since they're coming in here, they're going to be using some of the, some of the same buses that we...
No, it's, it's all new buses, I don't want to say July first, but for incoming September, there'll be all new buses.
Aye.
Uh, 'cause I think in a, in a new contract, you want to start with a fresh, a fresh fleet. If you want to change it, again, that's part of the negotiations we'll, we'll do with the contract. But in this case, what I've, they've set the RFP up to be is all new buses, really for the length of the, of the contract, which is seven years. And I think, and I think to what...
Go ahead.
I just want to point out, the buses do about half a million miles a year. So over seven years, it's, it's seven times five hundred thousand, so that's what? Three and a half million miles. So starting out with brand-new buses, I think, is significantly to our advantage.
Are all our current buses seven years old?
All of them? No.
No.
Quite a few of them because of the last couple of years. Plus, I think also, one of the other areas I'm looking at is with newer buses. Again, we have the idling policy. Newer buses comes with lower, better emissions controls, lower emissions in the buses, and better gas economy. And again, when I asked feedback from the two vendors, I was looking for, if somebody said, well, you know, if you, if you'd said two-year-old buses, I could have, I could have come in at forty. Nobody said that. Nobody, nobody gave me that, that kind of hint.
Peter's, is five years, well, it looks like five and two option?
Yes.
Is that standard?
Yes, that's been, that's what I, that we've had in the last couple of years. And that's what I think most of the school districts that I know of have. Because they need to then be able to take their fixed cost of a bus and spread it out. So to, so to spread it out, it gives them a lower cost per year.
How many accidents have we had that involved injuries with students in the last five years?
I guess I'll, I guess I'll ask the question, injuries that Goffstown Truck Center has been found at fault, or accidents in total?
What I'm, what I'm looking at, so you understand why I'm questioning this, is the seatbelt requirement that you had in there. And you're saying that you're, you're choosing not to go there, that's, that's fine. What I want to understand is how many injuries we've had.
Right. What I, what I'd ask is, that's why I wanted to do in two pods. If we approve Goffstown as the vendor, then I want to get into the options with the seatbelt, the GPS, or whatever. Because then we, we stick to their pricing of seatbelts and so forth. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. And I, I think there's sort of a tacit approval of, of Goffstown, but I think we should make it formal?
Yeah. Just before we go to the seatbelt thing, and I can understand that, but I think the only injury that I can recall was outside of a bus.
Yes.
Well, we had two within, the outside of the bus and the accident up at the mobile station. Back in the day, 'cause we do the, remember, up at the mobile station, I think they took one student to the hospital for precautionary purposes in the ambulance.
Right.
That, that's to my knowledge, the only two that I, that I remember since you and I have been here.
And to put it in perspective, that's for how many miles?
Half a million miles a year.
Yeah.
So that's for...
Three and a half million miles, over seven years.
Yeah. So three and a half million miles and five thousand, four, forty-five hundred to five thousand students a year.
And we had some minor end of vendors.
Oh, yeah, no, no, there have been... Right, but I'm looking, what I'm looking at is, is the justification for...
I think the only two that I can remember was the outside of the bus and the, the student with the mobile station.
That's correct.
Okay, is there a motion on accepting Goffstown? And we'll, we'll, with the stipulation that we'll discuss these add-ons next.
And we'll, we'll talk to them about adding, making a five, five reserves, not four.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion Ron, second by Nancy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, nothing. Okay, moving on to the question of, of options.
Okay, I can now bring up Greg, that's him, and Chris Eschott, who, Greg is the regional manager from Goffstown, who submitted the proposal. Chris has been the terminal manager for two years and will be the terminal manager for the, for the future.
Hi, welcome, and thanks for sitting through everything we've gone through up until now.
Thank you.
Okay, there were, there were three options that I asked all the vendors to, to discuss and price. One was GPS. And, and GPS, well, we've had some questions about how we can better track the buses, or how better can the parents track the buses, so forth and so on. As I said in my memo, the pricing you have for this GPS system that's been priced by Goffstown Truck Center would not allow real-time or on, real-time tracking of the bus for the parents. But this would allow the terminal manager to do is, if there was an inquiry from a parent that the bus came too late or too early, the GPS system of the bus would say that the bus six was at one of five Adams Road at, you know, seven oh two, or whatever. But the parent wouldn't be able to track where the bus is and then have the students run out, you know, two minutes before the bus gets there.
So you're logging more than tracking?
Right. Which is why, which is why we, we said, we, from staff, we weren't interested in this option. We didn't think the price warranted the, the service. What Goffstown will do is provide, I'll say, two or three mobile GPS mapping devices. So for example, if we're going to Keene Middle School, let's say, the driver isn't sure where Keene Middle School is, they would punch in the GPS system, which would guide, help the driver get to the Keene Middle School without getting lost. Or what also we're trying to do, we're not there yet, is to see if we can get a GPS system where we can punch in the routes. So if we have a sub doing the route for the day, the route number can come up and that the driver could follow the route, you know, the first day around. Makes, makes it a little bit easier than, than following the map. But we're, that's already in the pricing, those like mobile, portable GPS devices. If you want this service, it's an added cost, as mentioned in my memo. We thought it was too much to, to ask for.
The added service being the thing that broadcasts positions in real time?
No, no.
No, the broadcast would be like double the price that I gave you here.
We could catch them going down those cul-de-sacs.
Okay.
Okay, then the seatbelt option. And, and we brought this up because obviously it's been brought up in the past. We feel that it's just not, not there yet. We feel that if, that if you're going to put seatbelts in, certainly, we would say, in the kindergarten buses, we would probably recommend, strongly recommend a monitor for those buses and help the little ones get the seatbelts on. Because if you're going to have seatbelts, you probably can't roll, you shouldn't roll the bus until the seatbelt is on.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm, if, if your brother was here, his brother's in charge of the seatbelt and safety harness and safety seat program in the community. He would say they're too little for a seatbelt, wouldn't he?
Prob, prob, probably.
But he'd also have a mull and booster seats riding backwards.
Can't have booster seats in the buses.
Right.
Because they'll be used for other, this is, just so you know, everyone's aware, it's a three-point, not, not just, you know, the, right, it's a three-point. It's a whole, it's a whole different bench for a seatbelt, which is why the price is so high.
And we can't even see their heads.
Right.
Right.
So the three-point belt would be...
I'm just, I, I had to have, I had to ask because it's an option that's been discussed by boards in the, in the past.
Well, not to, sorry. Not, not to mention, you know, in the, hopefully unlikely event that we have an issue with a bus, you know, a catastrophic issue, one monitor getting all of those kids out of a bus, I think is...
And that's what I meant, we also mentioned is, is especially in the little ones, if something happens, how much time is it going to take to unbuckle twenty or twenty-three?
One individual.
Kindergarten kids in a bus.
Do you, do you serve any districts that do have these seatbelts in place?
We do not, not, not in England, we do not.
Do you know of any?
Waltham.
There is one in Waltham.
Massachusetts.
I think the starting this September is the only one I know of that has, going to try the seatbelts in the buses.
That is correct. They just, they just retrofitted them this past September, correct?
I assume other districts have, have asked you these questions. What considerations have other districts raised, pro and con?
Historically, the technology, believe it or not, it's shocking to hear, I'm sure, is, is three-point harnesses in a full-size school bus is, is very new in the last five, five, seven years. And the reasoning is, is, you know, the foundation for school bus safety for transported kids is compartmentalization. The idea that you have a high-back seat to your statement, high foam, thick foam seat, the idea is, in the event of an impact, the kid slides up, hits, hits the back of the seat and springs back, it's almost like a oil can effect. You know, there, there's debate over the lap belts, that there's more head and spinal injuries because the child is, you know, the, are restrained. They go forward, head, head impact, and, you know, head turns back. And lastly, the three-point, and the, the idea with the three-point being new is they were just able to integrate a standard bench seat, which is thirty-nine inches wide. The concept is thirteen-inch seating for, you know, three kids. So they were just able to do this without compromising the overall capacity of the vehicle. Historically, you would have to expand that thirteen inch to fifteen inch, which would take a, a standard seventy-one or seventy-two passenger vehicle and make it a sixty-passenger, which would obviously over, you know, affect vehicle counts and so forth and so on. So the cost is, is, is significant, and that was offered at a, at a pass-through. So it's, it's, that's our cost.
So to make sure I'm understanding this, you are recommending, or you are advising us that you don't see a safety advantage in a system that would ultimately bring your, pass more money through your business?
That's correct.
Okay. By which I mean, if, if they were arguing in favor of something that would bring them more money, I'd be more suspect of the input than if they're arguing against something that would bring them more money.
But when bring them more money?
Let's pass it.
Well, unless we...
They're just passing the cost of installing seatbelts to us.
Right. But we'd be looking at more monitors, we'd be looking at, didn't you just say fewer riders per bus?
Well, no, not, not with the new technology.
Okay.
Yeah, not with the new technology.
But with the earlier doctors.
Few years ago, they would have...
Right.
So Peter, can I ask about the GPS devices, just for a moment?
Yeah.
The, to outfit all of the buses would be twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars per year, right?
Yes.
Is it possible that we can get, I, I know you're talking about mobile devices for like a TomTom or Garmin or something like that for, for, you know, A to B type travel. Is it possible we can get outfitted with a couple of mobile devices? So in the event that we do have an issue with a route, we can put this device into the, the bus, and we can track the route for a couple of days or a week or so, and get the logging information so we can either see what the issue is or modify the route?
Absolutely. You're talking about adding a device that would, that would add, so, so in other words, you're talking like a partial GPS system?
No, no, what I'm asking for is, is instead of outfitting all the buses with a tracking system, right? Do you have mobile tracking systems that we can put into a, a bus, say? Say we're having an issue with a route, right? And we just, you know, we want to monitor the route, or we have a parent that has an issue, what have you. We can, we can install into the bus for, you know, a period of time, and then take it out, a mobile device?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it's available. And if it is, I look into it and share the, share the cost with Peter.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be like we do with the cameras today? We have cameras that are shared between the buses?
No, that's, again, older technology where you had the VCRs that would actually take the camera and move it. Now with the DVR, digital video, every vehicle is fitted with digital video.
To John's request, not to minimize it overly, but can't you basically do that with an iPhone?
As far as just tracking with GPS?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that technology, I mean, yeah, the, the technology relating to GPS is, is unbelievable. I mean, it changes by the day.
So, yeah, so basically, if I understand what the board is asking for, and we can do it, is get several mobile devices that would allow us to track a route with time for stops on routes that perhaps we have questions on and looking for...
Yeah, I don't care if we get one or, or two, it's just, just, you know, we have a question and we have someone saying, hey, the, the bus is showing up at seven o'clock, and we're saying, no, it's there at seven oh five.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't accommodate that.
Right. And, and obviously, I would, I would hope that, you know, that'd be something you'd be willing to, you know, work, work us, you know, into the cost of the contract.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely.
Have you had this type of request before?
We have one customer in Rhode Island that, that utilizes GPS. Not, not on a portable basis, no, no.
No, because I mean, I think, I think that the cost of twenty-five thousand dollars to outfit all the buses is, is much, but, you know, I have to assume that for, for one of these units, it has to be significantly less.
Yeah. And again, you know, that, that cost is, isn't, isn't hardware as much as it is service, right? So it's like our phones, they, they give away free phones all day long, but the bills are still huge.
Okay. Yeah, we'll look into that.
Anything else?
Yes.
Would it be helpful to have any kind of a GPS for sub, for sub-drivers?
Yeah, we are, we're looking into that.
This is the, okay.
Yeah, we're looking into that, so they can punch in the route.
Yes.
Right, we're looking into that. That's why I mentioned, but those portable ones.
Yes. Yes.
And then the last item for discussion is, um, audio recording. Today, um, the buses have one camera basically over the driver, looking down at the center view of, of the bus. These will have three cameras throughout the bus with, with, with a, with a much longer , uh, recording storage. The question is, does the board want to, at no cost, I mean, the camera, the systems come with audio/video. Right now, the RFP, which is our current service, just video. Does the board wanna move towards audio/video recording in the buses? If, if the answer is yes, there is no cost increase to the bus, there is a series of public hearings that you must follow because, well, state law, I would obviously have Gordon write up the, the procedures for us. Uh, and then once the, the third, the third readings are done, we would have, you know, audio/video recording in the buses. That's, I mean, Nate and I said it's up to the board whether you wanna do that, I know it's, like again, no cost, if they come with it, it's actually costing them to discontinue it really, but they will do that, uh, if, if the board doesn't feel like it wants to add audio service to the recording.
Discussion?
I think it needs a public hearing, that's all. With that, I'm okay with it. I think they'd appreciate it.
So you want us to go forward with audio/video?
This is me.
No, no.
But, but I think we need a public hearing and we need a policy put in place.
Yes.
JG, whatever.
Yeah, whatever.
It's required for audio, it, there's no option, you must have a public hearing and I think...
No, we should, the public should know about this.
And Merrimack Valley, I think, is one district that I know that has audio.
Just did it a little while ago.
Yeah, and so we'd have to do that.
And if we have the hearing, the kids are done.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, uh, John?
I, I'm okay with the idea.
Yeah, sir.
I don't, I don't see a disadvantage in doing it.
I'm just, I just...
Yeah, I agree.
Now, what's your, what's your policy on transporting armed students?
I'm sorry?
John, you've gotten in trouble before like this.
I, I...
Here we go again.
I've got, I've got a question, going back to the seatbelts. I understand what we're saying here, what is the industry experience on the use of seatbelts, on the three-point seatbelts? Do you have, you know, operating experience on this from other companies, yourself or other divisions of your company in other states? You know, pros and cons about it, what have they seen as...
Well, there, there are a lot of pros and cons and again, based on the, the technology being recent in the last five years, Mr. Kuro hit on a few of them about younger kids putting, using them, utilizing them as one thing, uh, using them as weapons is another, smacking people with them, they cross them across the aisleways and trip over them. I mean, they, I mean, again, depending on the kids, they, they can be a nuisance or, you know, they can be your best friend depending on the accident. And again, based on compartmentalization, and again, nobody can predict accidents, but, uh, you know, school busing being the safest mode of transportation, um, you know, it's a heavy vehicle, it's up high, high center of gravity, you know, in my personal experience or personal professional opinion, I think where a three-point harness comes into play is in a vehicle rollover or an exceptional kind of, I don't wanna say exceptional accident, but, but in out of the ordinary.
I guess, Peter, what I'd ask for with the board's concurrence is on the seatbelts, like a paper put together with the pros and cons on it, so when the board makes a decision on this, this issue, at least we have the write-up there and what the basis of that decision was. So if someone questions what it was in the past, it's not part of this discussion. Here is, hey, we've reviewed it, here's the industry experience on it, and here's why we, we looked at it. Just, just to put it formalized, if you don't mind, cause I think it's, it's a hot topic and I think we need to have the pros and cons on that.
Yeah, I also think that you need to include the, as I asked for earlier, the number of accidents that we've had over, say, the last contract and potentially what the average accident rate is in, in the nation, if we're in the area, I'm not sure how those numbers pan out.
Yeah, I think we can get that.
I can sit, I can say that the GPS system has, rec, as outlined, is a no.
I'll speak for myself, I concur that the outline is there and in the last statement is the one that I agree with. The district will negotiate the use of portable GPS devices for after-school activities and possibly for aids of substitutes when driving. I think that's what we asked for.
Or the one thing that John said, the idea of being able to track one bus for a...
Right, but if you got the portables there, you can use it for any purpose.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, Ron, I think that the, the point here is that, that the, the logging is a service-type thing, so that, that's probably something, you know, if we had one device would cost, say, a thousand dollars a year or not.
Yes, I'm also...
Twenty-five thousand.
Okay, I see what you're saying, right.
Except the device would probably log it internally.
Yeah, that's, that's here and there, I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah, no, I, I...
All right. So, um, a report on the seatbelts, um, but leaning against it, and we're going to schedule public hearings and ask for a policy, um, document regarding the, um, audio recording.
Right, and you don't have to do that till later on in the year, so there's no rush on the audio stuff.
Is that everybody's understanding? All right, I guess that's what you needed.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking, thank you for your time.
Thank you for taking good care of our children. Parents appreciate it.
FY thirteen budget discussion.
Okay, uh, just a couple of items before the, um, the board entertains some discussion and also Budget Committee. Actually, two items of, two good points right here. By approving the bus contract this evening, the way it is, uh, we're able to reduce, uh, that line in the budget by thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Also too, we have our school care rates are in, uh, which came in at one percent, we had budgeted at two percent, so that's worth ninety-one thousand dollars. So we'll be able to reduce the budget, uh, proposed budget by a hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred. And we took the liberty of assuming that the board might, uh, approve the...
The B C copies, we'll take them down.
Okay. So let me give you the revised... One, one, yeah. So just to preset any further discussion, what that would mean is the revised figure for the general fund budget would be sixty-four, seven, sixty-six, three, seventy, which would be three hundred and six thousand two hundred and nine dollars below the default budget. And keep in mind that the hundred and, almost hundred twenty-five thousand dollars reduction in the proposed budget also comes out of the default budget too. All right? And that represents three hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and forty-two dollar increase over this year's budget, which is an, a increase of zero point five eight percent, just a scooch on the six tenths of a percent increase, and also represents a six cent decrease in the tax rate. This is just the general fund budget. Okay?
Could you define decrease in the...
Right.
Tax, tax rate?
Right.
Decrease from our, your increase or decrease from...
Decrease from, uh, last year's tax rate for the general fund budget. Okay? So right now, where we're sitting for a discussion as far as general fund is concerned, is three hundred and six thousand two hundred and nine dollars below the default. On the additional sheets too, what you'll find is we put in the cost for the teacher contract, uh, article, and also the cost for the allied health agreement. All right? So if you add those in plus the warrant article for maintenance trust, where we stand now would be, uh, a one point seven nine percent increase, which would result in a twenty cent increase, uh, in the tax rate to go twelve dollars and sixty-five cents. All right, which represents a one point six percent, uh, increase in the, in the tax rate. That's where we are at this point in time. All right? The only other item I wanna address briefly is, uh, there had been some discussion, I believe, at a Budget Committee meeting regarding, uh, a number of items. One had to do with office assistants and, um, Todd had sent an email asking for, uh, backup information, which we have supplied to the Budget Committee, um, and also obviously to the School Board too. And I just wanna take, uh, two seconds to go through some of the highlights and frame some stuff. There are thirty-two office assistant positions, but I think they can't be viewed in isolation because of the myriad responsibilities and they're part of a systemic approach to assist in providing an efficient and effective operation that provides time and support to administration, teachers, students, support staff, parents and community members. Their roles include safety of students, school facilities, completing a massive array of required forms, equipment, inventory, bus transportation, emergency response, scheduling, which includes students, parents, staff, special education meetings, summer school and facility, uh, facilities usage, uh, purchase orders, working papers, activity accounts, approximately five hundred thousand dollars. Assisting in student college application process, assisting with standardized testing, vendor contracts, enrollments and withdrawals, transcripts, injury reports, attendance, NESTA, Medicaid billing, IEP distribution, E S Y preparation, phone calls and emails. Think it's also important to note that since two thousand six, forty-two daily assistant hours, or roughly the equivalent of eight and a half individuals, have been eliminated from the budget. That's a twenty percent reduction. In addition, attendance monitors at both the middle school and the high school were eliminated, shifting responsibilities to office assistants at those locations. The aforementioned positions have been absorbed through the continued and increased utilization of technology, new software systems, attendance, payroll, X two purchase orders, inventory and work orders, and administration and guidance and others, actually typing their own reports and memos. Should also be noted that aside from the reduction of staff, the number of contracted days have been reduced for a number of positions. Current office assistant staffing has also been cost-effective and some of their duties have contributed to the reduction of administrative staff, eighteen percent reduction in administrative staff since two thousand and six. Should also be mentioned that physicians serve multiple masters and provide services to multiple constituents to, to departments. Two examples are as follows. The office assistant to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, provide services to the assistant superintendent, IT, library media and Leo twenty-one. The office assistants in the high school, uh, high school, uh, provide services to guidance, counselors, assistant principals, students and parents. The role of offices assistant, office assistants is now what can be described as a traditional role of a secretary that provides support to one individual. The positions are multifaceted, provide services to multiple individuals, in reality, provide a cost savings in the maintenance, the current level of services necessary for the operation of the school system with almost eight hundred full and part-time employees, approximately five thousand students, and at least one and a half times the number of parents, the myriad, myriad number of community groups and community members. To get, gain a deeper understanding of the roles and responsibilities, I include in the body of the report, a sampling of, uh, their roles and responsibilities. I think it's also important to note that we have and continue to have to review methods, procedures, assignments and utilization of technology to continue to evolve as an organization. We take the aforementioned very seriously and as with any public or private organization, we take into account the clientele we serve, the unique needs and the best way of delivering services. It's also important to note that the needs, requirements and obligations of the school district do not match up one-to-one, nor should they, with private sector organizations, nor does the private sector match up with public schools. The same can be said for hospitals, state agencies and the like, as their missions, functions and clientele are at many junctures, junction points dissimilar. Do we believe that office assistants should serve more than one individual? Yes, we do. Do we believe that an ongoing systemic review of roles, responsibilities, operations and procedures should occur on an ongoing basis? Yes, we do. Do we believe all of our positions would complement each other in a systemic manner? Yes, we do. Have we endeavored to meet those beliefs? Yes, we have. We have done so through the increased use of technology in all aspects, from parental notification to work orders, to scheduling of meetings, to finance. The elimination of eight and a half office, uh, assistant positions coupled with reduction in time and work schedule for the same office assistants, the elimination of attendance monitors and an eighteen percent reduction in administrative staff, and the assignment and responsibility of office assistants to multiple individuals, crossover assignments and supportive functions within the context of our service delivery model, in meaning our mission is consistent, I believe, with the aforementioned beliefs. And just to give you just an example, P, uh, the office assistant that reports to Peter does sched, does the scheduling for all our schools. We schedule between eight thousand and eighty-five hundred activities during the course of the year. That's everything so that we don't have conflicts. So town, when the town has their deliberative session, we don't have the Scarlet Pimpernel located in the library or in, in the high school cafeteria. Just as example, I don't know why I said the Scarlet Pimpernel.
Hey, John, don't worry about what you say.
All right, okay. But to get, to give you an understanding of all those activities. Now, what we also did too is, just to give you an example, this, give you an understanding of the thirty-two positions, fifteen are eight hours, three are seven and a half, eleven are seven, one is six, one is five, one is three. Only eight are full year, three are two hundred and forty days and twenty-one are school year. So, uh, and just to give you a simple example, because, you know, you just wanna think of the, um, elementary schools, let me just give you a quick example of just the interactions they have over a two-year period. This is just one of our elementary offices. Answered twenty-one phone calls, fifty-five front doorbells, extra help for students thirteen, extra help for teachers seventeen, thirty parent contacts.
What's the time here?
This is one day. A copier, ten with a nurse, seven deliveries, and then of course, the always exciting end of day dismissals at the elementary school. The next day, the results are very similar, day two, twenty-three phones, uh, thirty-three front doorbells, extra help for students which call in or parent, you know, this runs, you, you tend to forget. In a normal office environment, mom doesn't usually call and say, I'm bringing in Johnny's lunch, um, can you get that delivered to Johnny? This is real life for us, okay? Also too, in today's society, we have to be extremely careful about who children are released to. So we have a listing of who children can be released to. Unfortunately, London Dairy, like other communities, there are certain students that cannot be released, relate, released to certain individuals, certain adults. We have to make sure that it's followed through. So this, the office assistants are frontline as far as that is concerned. So these are just the normal things that go on in a school. And heaven forbid, we release a child to the wrong person. And it's critical that we do that. There are often, just as in the public se, private sector, emergencies, people call, they have to get in touch with somebody right away and we have to get in touch with the kid right away. Principal or the assistant principal is out in the building doing observation, I don't think people wanna get an answering machine. So it's critically important, it's just a different beast when you, when you deal with these kinds of issues. So what we've tried to do is outline, uh, roles and responsibilities, run the gamut from elementary to high school, to the guidance secretaries, to the house secretaries, to the bookkeepers. Keep in mind, and we just had the audit report, we have about five hundred thousand dollars a year that goes through our accounts from clubs and activities, uh, schools, those have to be accounted for, money has to be taken to the bank, checks have to be cut. So these are all these things that allow our administration to do what they're supposed to be doing. Working with students, working with, uh, parents, uh, doing supervision and evaluation allows our guidance people to meet with people. Keep in mind too, and we're gonna talk about systemic, we have, we have reduced a number of positions, given additional responsibilities to administrators and guidance counselors, that's where we want their focus to be. We don't want them unnecessarily filling out forms. The less time the classroom teachers have or the special ed teachers have, that they don't have to fill out the ninety-nine forms that we have to have or do the scheduling, means that it's more time they're spending planning for the kid, for instruction and meeting with kids. So do we think this is a cost-effective way? Sure. Do we continue to... Do we continue to evaluate it? We don't. You think of the size of our operation, the number of people, and I think the fact that we have the equivalent of thirty-two positions, actually thirty-two people, less than the equivalent of thirty-two positions in the district, it is really, from my mind anyways, cost savings. And I think the points that were brought up, yeah, I mean, from the outside, when you look at the org chart, we have to put some, an administrative assistant reports to somebody, but that's not the only person that they're, they do work for. So, that, there's backup. I just provide that to you as you go through your deliberations, as you go through it. I know the issue was brought up, and it's not to be antagonistic towards anyone. In fact, this is our life, and this is the way we look at it, and this is what people have to do.
Todd, go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to say on behalf of the Budget Committee, thank you, Nate, for putting together this comprehensive report that clearly identifies the apples and oranges comparison between private sector business environment to something like a school district. It really is not a fair comparison. There are good reasons for all the administrative folks that you have in place. I've said it before, I'll say it again, it's money well spent. In my opinion, as a budget, one Budget Committee member and as a taxpayer, I personally feel that the school district is extremely well-run. There's obviously significant reasons for the positions you have in place. It's cost-efficiently run. I commend you on that, and I thank you very much for once again, yet another extremely thorough answer to some of the questions that the Budget Committee has been challenged with of recent meetings, and I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
That's no problem. We're glad to provide the information. I think it's helpful for the community to understand what we're doing and how we're doing it, and what the justification for it is, and I'm glad people brought it up so that there aren't lingering doubts, and, you know, just happy to provide that information.
Thank you very much.
And I want to thank my administrative staff for putting that stuff together.
Thanks.
Steve.
Nate, I know the board has provided guidance over the, over my tenure.
Nine year. Nine year.
Okay, nine year.
Who's counting?
At least it's not a dollar head tax. Since I've been here, the board has provided, you know, guidance on reductions in different areas, including this one. You brought up a number of part-time positions. In those, do we, to help the public, do we still provide benefits to those positions?
Depends on, no, no.
With Social Security?
Right, right.
Health benefits or?
It would depend on the number of hours that I'll work. A number of years, a number of years ago, the negotiating committee for the board established, and I forget the exact number of hours.
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred hours that somebody has to work to get benefits like health insurance and so on. That's significantly saved costs. The other thing, too...
How many days would thirteen hundred hours?
Would take six, if you look at six as big. Seven hour day.
So, we take a full school year of seven-hour days?
Yes.
To qualify for health?
Right, at seven, right. And then, the other thing that we've done over the years is go from two-hundred-and-sixty day positions to two-hundred-and-forty day positions in a number of instances. What does that do? I mean, what that does is it eliminates vacation, so, for people, so they're working the two-hundred-and-forty minus, you know, the legal holidays that they have to have, but it's not a full year position.
So, they don't get paid for being off?
That's correct. That's correct. Then, what has also happened is a number of positions, not only days have been reduced, but also hours have been reduced. And we've consolidated those. So, for instance, just like last year, there was, we dropped another office assistant position from the district office that was dropped, because there was one that was for director of library media, and there was one for the assistant superintendent, though that person covered multiple areas. We dropped the secretarial position, the office assistant position for library media. The office assistant that was working with the assistant superintendent picked up that responsibility, too. So, that office assistant works with IT, library media, the assistant superintendent, actually gifted and talented, too, because that falls under reading. So, there are a myriad of departments that that person assists and works with and does things for, including inventory, which is a monstrous activity for us, because, just to give you an example, on Chuck's side, we have two thousand pieces of equipment that have to be inventoried and monitored. We have a huge number of projectors, computers, and so on, that all have to be tagged and will have to be monitored, particularly all those that are bought with federal funds. You lose track of those, and the order comes by, and they go, "Give us our money back." And the federal will do that. So, it's tracking all those items becomes critical, the scheduling of all the buildings, monitoring all of the purchase orders that go out, and tracking all of that, making sure that stuff is taken care of.
Just a last thing, John. I think something you mentioned in your oratory was, I didn't think of, that's happened in these years, that we've gone through these reductions, is the door buzzers.
Yeah.
You know, those doors used to always be open. They weren't locked with a doorbell, and somebody had to get up and get out to answer them.
Right. So, you know, the additional security issues, and, you know, we've dropped other positions that I mentioned, the attendance monitors, we dropped those positions a couple of years ago. By the way, just a quick switch, it was Folly Granger who played the Scarlet Pimpernel.
So, Nate, it seems that we're being very creative, and we're working diligently to utilize the resources that we have with these assistants. And if I compare that to the corporate world, I don't really think that actually happens in the corporate world the way we work. Obviously, we're two different entities, we're two different industries, but if I look at, because I come from the corporate world, how assistants behave, obviously, by using technologies and other things, you can, you know, you can do away with some of these people in the corporate world, but you don't utilize them in the corporate world the way that we are utilizing them here. You will not see it. And I think that's the biggest difference. So, when someone compares the two, again, your apples and oranges here. You're looking at people who work multiple jobs, wear multiple hats during the day. We're utilizing them differently from how we deal with their payrolls and so forth. In the corporate world, it doesn't happen that way, and you have to be commended in how we're actually managing these people.
Thank you. It's really, it's a team effort, and you were much more succinct in getting it out than I was. But one thing I just want people to keep in mind is that, just like on the private sector, you look at your organization in a systemic way, and how can you maximize the use of people, and things are interrelated, so that in some areas, you are being cost-effective, in that people are picking up what could be considered to be administrative tasks at a lower rate of pay, if you will, as opposed to having, quote-unquote, "an administrator" do it at a higher rate of pay, and allowing those people to, in fact, do what their job is. And if you go back to my opening statement, the span of control for administrators in our district exceeds the national average. We go twenty-two to one, the national average is about fifteen to one, and if you look at the private sector, there are very few operations where a manager has a span of control of twenty-two people. So, having that additional support is critical to allow people to do an effective job with that large span of control. And then, you also throw in a whole bunch of kids that sometimes are good and sometimes are not so good.
Anybody else?
Just one observation. Tonight, we've spent, I didn't look at the clock, probably in the neighborhood of fifteen minutes discussing the reason why we have the support personnel in administrative functions that we do. I can't imagine how much of your time we consumed doing that report. I also ate up a bunch of our time having Kim and you explain what special ed people do, what people covered by the allied health contract do, all of which, if I'm, I don't mean to put words in Sean's mouth, but if I'm understanding what he said correctly, is largely because of questions that one or two people have asked us at one or two different times. Is that correct, Sean? Or Todd, I'm sorry. I knew a Sean Junkus once.
That's correct.
Ooh, that sounds like a court.
It just, it just makes me wonder sometimes about the amount of time that we have to invest in things that are high-profile but low, high-profile to some people, but low interest to the community in general, and the amount of time that we have to spend drilling down for questions that most people really aren't asking.
I appreciate you saying that, John. I think it's also important to get this information out.
I agree that it's important to get the information out for an educational purpose, but in terms of having to justify what we're doing or rationalize it for critics' sake, I'm not sure that that always warrants the amount of investment we wind up having to put into it. Ron?
I think it does, because I think if the question is asked by one or two people, there are more people that are asking it. And I think you need to do something like this, because people do look at secretaries or office assistants, and they take a title, and they say, "Office assistants." You know, "We used to have six, and now we have one in the corporate world," and they don't realize, if we didn't have the students there, we would have a reduced number here. The purpose for the office assistants, when you get down to it, is to serve the students and the parents, not to serve the administrators.
Right.
And that's the big thing, and it's our job to explain in multiple ways to the community why we are spending sixty-three million dollars. And unfortunately, some of these questions that they ask is just because a person brings it up, there's someone asking him, or a lot more people that wonder about it, and if you don't scratch the itch, they're going to go away with the wrong perception of the issue. I know it takes time, but that's the nature of the business.
Okay. Anybody else?
What, well, I guess at this point, what I would like to ask is just some direction for the board. We're going to meet Thursday.
By anything else, I meant anything else, not the office, not the office assistant.
I'm sorry. And what I'd like to request of the board is if, rather than say, we'd like you to do a, cut A, B, and C, or add A, B, and C, or address A, B, and C, if you could, as we've done in the past, say, what would happen if we asked you, we've already given you about $125,000. What would you recommend to us if we asked you to cut another twenty-five or another fifty, just to give us a ballpark number so that, in fact, we could address that on Thursday night? That would be, at least on our side, that would be appreciative. I think we're not totally dense. We do catch messages as we go through the budget process. So, you know, or you could say, geez, add, no, no. But that would be appreciated on our part, just to give us kind of like a ballpark, and we'll come back, we can come back Thursday.
Go ahead, John.
Nate, what I'd like to ask you to do for me is if we were flat with the increase to the tax rate, I'd like to see what that would look like. Flat tax rate?
For general fund?
Yeah.
Then, we're done, because I'm six cents below with general fund.
No, no, I thought we were over.
We're twenty cents, he's talking, I had the same question. Twenty, we're talking twenty cents over right now, with all the contracts passing.
With all the warrant articles. So...
So, I'm asking what?
We want to know what would happen.
What would happen if we were at?
I do. With all the warrant articles.
Okay.
How would you eliminate that twenty cent increase?
Okay.
What would happen?
That'd be my one question.
All right.
The only thing I can answer that, Nate, is if, can you put it in a priority order there, so as we start going down?
Oh, sure.
Just to show, because I'd like to see a number if we make a cut.
The running total.
Todd?
Yeah, and from the Budget Committee's standpoint, what we were looking for, in fact, what I tasked the Budget Committee to do at our last Budget Committee meeting was to actually put together items to discuss, to, because oftentimes, it boils down to the question will be asked, "Well, you tell me where to cut." So, we took it from a different perspective of, okay, I tasked the Budget Committee, if you have any items that you want to table, let's discuss it at our next meeting, so on the tenth. That's what we plan to do. So, you may get a barrage of questions come Thursday that are very line item specific as maybe, can we do this, or can we do that? You may not. There's a list, I believe I forwarded to Peter today. Just to give an idea, these are things that we're kind of asking about, not we, but some committee members and through me, we're asking about from the Budget Committee's standpoint, are these things that we can discuss. And they do get down to very salient, succinct points of specific line items on the budget. Do we really need this year? What if it was this versus a buy versus a rent type of thing, or a lease type of thing? Questions like that that get very specific. And you may get questions that say, what happens if we took just a dollar amount out? And it's up to you guys to figure out where you want to take it out. Just, that may make more sense, but...
What would the dollar amount be for a flat?
It's three cents per hundred thousand.
So, if we're six cents under and then twenty, it's twenty-six cents, so roughly nine hundred...
I think your net's twenty.
Your net's twenty right now.
Net is twenty.
Right, so...
So, twenty, it's six hundred thousand, roughly, give or take. Six, seven hundred thousand.
Which would put you how far below default?
Six hundred, not, almost a million.
Three hundred behind, so it'd be about a million dollars.
Almost a million.
You'd be about three hundred below this year's budget. A million or a higher level of services or the recommended budget.
Right, and actually, and that would be six hundred, that would really be...
About three hundred below the target.
Seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars below what we had initially proposed, because we took out the hundred and twenty-five already.
By the spirit of the discussion we just had, you're realizing, of course, that any possible cut list you're going to come in is going to come under criticism from some quarters as being catastrophizing and going after the sacred cows that you know will cause the most community reaction.
Well, I mean, I think we all know, and it's no secret, to get to any kind of amount money like that, you're talking personnel in one form or another. And not to say the list would be exact, but we went through this exercise several months ago.
Yeah.
When we were looking at the million dollars...
And that was the criticism from some quarters.
Right. I was not comfortable with cuts. I was comfortable with the process that we used and the way we prioritized things last time. We'll be meeting with the administrators to go through, to come in with that list, but yeah, I mean, do, if I have to choose between academic program and a co-curricular program where perhaps you charge money to allow that to happen, my priority is going to be that basic academic program.
Absolutely.
Do I have to, if I have to make decisions regarding whether or not we offer summer school versus programming during the year, I'm going to say programming during the year. So, you know, it's not going to be the philosophical bent, it's not going to be... So, you know, it's not going to be, the philosophical bent is not going to be dissimilar from the exercise we went through several months ago. I mean, and if it was significantly different, then you could have, then legitimately you could say, I was blowing, we were blowing smoke, and we weren't.
So just out of curiosity, if a similar instruction were to result from the deliberative session this year, would you be looking at the same process and probably the same recommendations that we're expecting to see on Thursday?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. That would be my recommendation. What the board winds up doing, you know, is another issue. And, you know, going on the record, I'm not in favor of, and I, you know, six hundred thousand dollars worth of reductions. I mean, we're going to go through the, we'll go through this so the board can make legitimate decisions. I think we came in with a pretty lean budget. You know, obviously, we have to be cognizant of what the economic times are and how things are luck, but to let people know what, in fact, you can buy for X amount of dollars. I mean, it's that simple. So, you know, we're certainly more than capable of coming in with it and make a decision, and people at deliberative session will have to make a decision, because it's going to be different this year than it has been in the past. So that's it.
All right. Anything additional from the board regarding the budget? Anything additional from the Budget Committee regarding the budget? We're done on that? Okay, great. Nate, you're comfortable with the input?
Yes. Board instructed me to add two-point-four million dollars.
Approximately that, as long as it doesn't come out of the tax rate. Enrollment report, Nate.
Oh, jeez, I was ready to go.
Yeah.
Um, there we go. I'd like to confirm once again.
Yes, we do have students.
We have students. Here we go. This is really interesting. No change in the overall enrollment from November to December. Usually we get a drop. In December, we'll probably see in January, but pre-K through twelve, forty-eight, forty-eight. Twenty students out of district, sixty-one home study, and fifty-six adult ed students, thirty-three are night students, and twenty-three are day students. So we're right, right in there. Last year, at this time, we had forty-nine, ninety-two compared to forty-eight, sixty-eight total. There you go.
Terrific. We've covered everything that was on our non-public agenda. Those were personnel nominations and leaves of absences, covered under RSA ninety-one A three, sections two, B, and C. So I guess there's nothing left but to ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks very much.